While this free career training is giving some jobless Angelenos new work opportunities. Anna Marcos has more on the Workforce Training Program, a partnership between L.A. Valley College and the city of L.A.
Gowning up is a key part of the job for a biotech worker, and these trainees are getting their first and somewhat challenging lesson.
We have to hold our hands like this just to pretty much keep our hands sterile.
Depending upon the product and depending upon the company you are working it, sometimes you have three layers of gowning.
The six-week, 200-hour training is part of the Workforce Training Program, a joint effort by the L.A. Valley College and the city of L.A. Students can choose from one of two career paths: the Manufacturing Academy or the Biotechnology Academy. Staff workers tell us why the training is so successful.
We have found the best benefit to do is short-term vocational training based on employers' needs. So all of our training starts with employers, and we work on our curriculum and customize curriculum to meet their needs.
The program is free, but only military vets and laid-off workers are eligible. The students regularly find jobs with the program's industrial partners like Baxter and Grifols Biologicals, two huge biotech companies, as well as manufacturing companies throughout the valley.
I manufacture intravenous immune globulins. I'm very proud of what we do. Our company saves and improves lives every day on a global scale.
The students in this part of the program are not guaranteed jobs, but they are guaranteed interviews, and 85% to 90% of them end up with jobs and a career.
It really does give me hope, you know, for my future. I look at this as something that I can, you know, pretty much do for the rest of my life. I would like to move up in this career, in this field.
I'm currently, I'm a veteran that's, I'm new to L.A., and I've found an opportunity that would be able to utilize my military experience.
And they go from one level to another, and these are really careers, not merely jobs.
So we got free training and 90% chance of getting a job.
Sounds like a formula for success. Organizers hope to eventually expand the program to allow more students to become eligible. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
For more information, visit lavcjobtraining.org. Well, firefighters at LAX have new weapons in their arsenal in case fire erupts in and around the aircraft. Gil Reyes has more from Fire Station 80. Gil?
Well, Yana, you are looking at them. Six new advanced rescue firefighting apparatus, and fire officials say they are specifically equipped with tools to handle fires here at the airport.
The vehicles specialize in battling fast-moving fuel fires on grounded airplanes, fires like this one, that erupted accidentally in LAX back in 2009.
They are quite different than a regular fire truck. So a regular fire truck carries 500 gallons of water. These carry 3,000, six times the amount.
LAX receives the latest, most advanced aircraft rescue firefighting vehicles, or ARFs for short. The airport used to have four ARFs, now they have six. More backup in case of multiple fires here.
They get out of quarters very fast. They're faster than our old apparatus. The reliability is way up because the old apparatus were getting old and required a lot of maintenance.
L.A. City Fire Chief Ralph Torrazza says ARFs have firefighting tools that typical fire trucks don't have, like 54-foot-long booms. These booms can pierce into planes like a needle, then maneuver in hard-to-reach spaces like a surgical scope. The vehicles are also equipped with powerful fire suppression agents like Halitron and Purple K. These agents can douse fuel fires quickly, but could also be harmful to people and electronics. Our firefighters are trained to use them with caution. 16 of our firefighters are stationed at LAX at all times, and they're not alone.
There's three other fire stations that surround this airport that do the emergency medical services, the hazardous materials, urban search and rescue, and homeland security. So yes, we believe in L.A. has supported us, that we are as safe as we've ever been.
The six new ARFs cost around $800,000 each, a bargain according to fire officials. At LAX, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The old vehicles will be deployed to Ontario and Van Nuys airports. Well, research shows that women make government more transparent, inclusive, and accessible, but too few women serve. Rasha Goel has more on a training program that's helping empower women to be prolific in the public office space.
If you are in it for the right reasons, you can truly make a difference. And I think that's really what stands out in terms of being a woman and being in politics because that is what we care about.
Assemblymember Ling Ling Chang was among the panelists at the Ready to Run Campaign Training, which provides tools and encourages women to run for public office. The event was sponsored by Mount St. Mary's University.
This is a nonpartisan campaign training program for women, and it is both women that are ready to run and some of our students who are almost ready to run or thinking about a career in public service.
Attendees received insightful information from elected officials, appointed individuals in public office, and those serving on boards and commissions throughout California. The goal: to empower women to run for office and have representation in state legislature and beyond.
Women currently in the legislature only make up about 25% of the legislature, state legislature, but they are 50% of the population.
It's also said women need a little more of a push when it comes to running for public office. California is currently ranked 20th in the nation for women's representation in elected office.
What the research shows us is that women often have to be asked several times to run for office, whereas a man generally has to be asked once, and he'll run for office.
Hopes are that will all change. Ready to Run is held by the university once a year. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
For more information on the program and other training sessions, log on to msmu.edu. Well, the L.A. City Library hopes a little street cred will go a long way in luring more youth through its doors. Gil Reyes reports on new limited-edition library cards created by one of L.A.'s famous street artists.
World-renowned street artist Shepherd Ferry reveals the new look of L.A. City Library Cards, a look he co-designed.
It's an incredible honor for me because, you know, I really believe in what the library does. The library embodies the principles of education, equality, empowerment.
Ferry collaborated with fellow artist Cleon Peterson to create the work. It's an image of L.A. Central Library in downtown. People can use the free library cards to check out books and so much more.
E-comics, e-magazines, you can take an online course, you can even get an accredited online high school diploma through the library.
Shepherd Ferry is perhaps best known for his Barack Obama Hope poster, seen everywhere during the 2008 presidential campaign. Also famous, Ferry's Obey Giant Street Art. The original sticker depicting wrestling icon Andre the Giant became a counterculture hit nearly 30 years ago. Today, the man who gained fame as an underground artist doesn't mind working within the mainstream to lure more youth to the library.
I come from a very outsider standpoint with street art, punk rock, skateboarding. You do everything you can to change the world to be better, and when you don't have access to the system itself, then you work outside of it. But once you can infiltrate it and make it better from the inside, then that's a great strategy as well.
Go out there, collect something amazing, and if you don't have a library card, and this is the excuse for why you finally get one, then we've accomplished our mission.
There will be 100,000 of these new cards available at all L.A. City Library branches while supplies last. At the L.A. Central Library in downtown, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The L.A. City Library System has 73 branches to choose from. Well, city leaders gathered to remember a dark period in Armenian history. Getting around downtown L.A. may soon get a lot easier, and a neighborhood in South L.A. gets the beauty treatment. All these stories in City B. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti, L.A. Councilmember Paul Krikorian, and the Armenian community came together at the Armenian Genocide Monument at Bignell Park in Monobello to commemorate the 101st anniversary of the Armenian genocide and to bring awareness to the new threats being faced by the Armenian people in Syria.
But we're also here to make sure that our country steps up to protect people who are facing destruction even today as we speak.
Los Angeles has been a place of refuge, not just for Armenians, but for those fleeing genocide, war, economic deprivation. It's who we are as Los Angeles, a place that breaks walls down, not builds them up.
L.A. Councilmember Jose Huizar took a ride on a Metro bicycle recently through downtown L.A. to promote a new bike-sharing program coming to the area this summer. The city has partnered with Metro for the program, which will bring more than 1,000 bikes to 65 stations by 2016. For a fee, residents, commuters, and tourists will be able to borrow the bikes to get around downtown. They'll also be able to check out the bikes at one station and leave them at another.
It's healthy, it lessens traffic, and here we go. If you don't have a bike, you can come to downtown L.A. and explore the beautiful downtown L.A., the new downtown L.A.
Council District 9 community members, in collaboration with several city departments, including Board of Public Works, held a resource fair and tree planting event at Manual Arts High School on Vermont Avenue. Several nonprofits were on hand offering their services to parents who also helped plant trees. LADWP officials say the new trees will make a big difference in cutting energy use.
The trees reduce the heat, they will reduce the air-condition bills for our rate payers because the heat will go down, and DWP benefits because we get to meet our 20% energy efficiency reduction goals that we have to meet by the year 2020.
A new exhibition is unveiled near the Wilshire-Vermont train station, connecting not only commuters but the community as well. Rasha Goel has more.
It's really great that they're trying to combine that, all the artwork in here. Like, I feel like that should be done everywhere because it's so important and crucial to people's lives.
Paige Emery, a Los Angeles artist, is among other artists whose work was recently unveiled at the Art of Life Connected exhibit in Koreatown's Wilshire-Vermont residential complex. She was the first-place winner of a competition that was open to artists locally and globally.
The painting is called In Transit. It's a picture of my friend in the subway, and a Metro bus is like going right by her, and everything's kind of moving at the same time, and it's kind of about, you know, just like being constantly on the move.
250 applicants applied for the competition and submitted their 2D, or two-dimensional work. Of that, 50 winners were actually chosen, and their work can be seen and highlighted throughout this area. Another artist, Casey Salas, who Ciclu Via Photograph won him second place.
It's amazing. It feels like a stepping stone. This encourages me to keep with photography and submit my work to other places.
The contest celebrates the city's diverse cultures. It's also part of an ongoing effort to connect the city's neighborhoods and residents.
For them to have an environment that is enriched in people that care about the looks and aesthetics of this community is very, very exciting.
Art is important in every atmosphere. It's very kind to people, it's very calming, it's inspirational.
And if you feel like owning one, well, these great pieces are also on sale. In Koreatown, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Officials say the Art of Life Connected exhibit will be open to the residents, retail tenants, and the 25,000 people that walk through that courtyard. Well, the LAPD recognizes reserve officers for distinguished service during its annual gala. This year, a pair of classic TV cops join the list of honorees who've made a difference in people's lives. Here's Gil Reyes with Part Three of his special series on the LAPD Reserve Program.
LAPD Chief Charlie Beck helps to honor outstanding men and women from the LAPD Reserve Corps. These are sworn officers who protect and serve as volunteers, mostly in between their real jobs.
400 men and women served Los Angeles Police Department as reserve police officers, and this is just a small way by which we recognize their enormous, enormous contribution to public safety in this city.
The Twice a Citizen Awards took place at the Avalon in Hollywood. It's hosted every year by the Los Angeles Police Reserve Foundation, the Reserve Corps' main financial support since 1984. Carla Amundsen is the foundation co-president. Carla's husband, philanthropist William Amundsen, also happens to be a reserve.
They have the exact same training as a regular police officer, but they volunteer their time, and they put their lives on the line to help protect the city that we all love.
You know, most reserves work hard, they spend a lot of hours, and there's no pay. So you do it out of the love of the job.
Reserveist Michael Hagan, a retired full-time officer, was recognized as Reserve Officer of the Year for emergency operations and specialized divisions. Also honored, actor Kent McCord. Though not an officer, the actor co-starred on the classic television drama Adam 12. McCord's portrayal of a dedicated LAPD officer put the department in a positive light and influenced many viewers to join the force as full-timers and reserves. McCord's Adam 12 co-star veteran actor Martin Milner was honored in memoriam. Milner passed away in September. And LAPD Chief Charlie Beck received this year's Friedman Award for his support of the Reserve Program. Chief Beck began his career over 40 years ago as a volunteer LAPD reservist with the Rampart Division. At the Avalon in Hollywood, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Proceeds from the dinner help fund equipment and other expenses for the Reserve Corps. Well, a new play hits a high note in East L.A. One of the most popular artists in electronic dance music will get your heart pumping, and they are ferocious and unextinct at the L.A. Zoo, and you can now see them in all their glory. All this and this week's things to do. Boyle Heights will be the setting for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on the east side of Los Angeles, as Brown Fist Productions presents East Side Heartbeats, a new rock-and-roll musical. East Side Heartbeats tells the fictional story of Jimmy Ramirez, leader of the four-man vocal group The East Side Heartbeats. The production, which runs through May 29th, will be presented on Casa 0101 Theater's main stage. The theater is located at 2102 East First Street in Boyle Heights. For more, visit casa0101.org. The New York Times may have called him "the new face of electronic dance music" in a recent profile, but Ryan Radin, known as Cascady, has been in the trenches of the EDM scene as an original recording artist and in-demand DJ for more than a decade. He has created chart-topping remixes for everyone, from Lady Gaga to Beyoncé, and has performed between 150 and 200 headlining shows a year for the last 10 years, building a name for himself as an innovator of the EDM scene. See him live at the Los Angeles Convention Center on Saturday, May 7th. For more, visit cascadymusic.com. A ferocious pack of 17 life-size, lifelike, prehistoric creatures have debuted as part of Dinosaurs: Unextinct at the L.A. Zoo, a new exhibit produced and presented by the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association. These animatronic dinosaurs, brought to life with electronic brains, take visitors back in time for a colossal adventure, providing a rare chance to discover a lost world from millions upon millions of years ago, while warning about the very real threat of extinction faced today by many endangered species. The exhibit is open now at the L.A. Zoo. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Bulky item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
MyL.A. 311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app, available from the App Store or on Google Play. MyL.A. 311 links Angelenos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even senior citizen center. Request graffiti removal. You can even pay your DWP bill. Keep up with what's going on at City Hall, and even report illegal dumping. MyL.A. 311 puts the power of City Hall in the palm of your hand.
Hi, I'm Mike from Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
This is a nonpartisan campaign training program for women, and it is for women that are ready to run and some of our students who are almost ready to run or thinking about a career in public service.
Attendees received insightful information from elected officials, appointed individuals in public office, and those serving on boards and commissions throughout California. The goal: to empower women to run for office and have representation in state legislature and beyond.
Women currently in the legislature only make up about 25% of the state legislature, but they are 50% of the population.
It's also said women need a little more of a push when it comes to running for public office. California is currently ranked 20th in the nation for women's representation in elected office.
What the research shows us is that women often have to be asked several times to run for office, whereas a man generally has to be asked once, and he'll run for office.
Hopes are that will all change. Ready to Run is held by the university once a year. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
For more information on the program and other training sessions, log on to msmu.edu. Well, the L.A. City Library hopes a little street cred will go a long way in luring more youth through its doors. Gil Reyes reports on new limited-edition library cards created by one of L.A.'s famous street artists.
World-renowned street artist Shepherd Ferry reveals the new look of L.A. City Library Cards, a look he co-designed.
It's an incredible honor for me because, you know, I really believe in what the library does. The library embodies the principles of education, equality, empowerment.
Ferry collaborated with fellow artist Cleon Peterson to create the work. It's an image of L.A. Central Library in downtown. People can use the free library cards to check out books and so much more.
E-comics, e-magazines, you can take an online course, you can even get an accredited online high school diploma through the library.
Shepherd Ferry is perhaps best known for his Barack Obama Hope poster, seen everywhere during the 2008 presidential campaign. Also famous, Ferry's Obey Giant Street Art. The original sticker depicting wrestling icon Andre the Giant became a counterculture hit nearly 30 years ago. Today, the man who gained fame as an underground artist doesn't mind working within the mainstream to lure more youth to the library.
I come from a very outsider standpoint with street art, punk rock, skateboarding. You do everything you can to change the world to be better, and when you don't have access to the system itself, then you work outside of it. But once you can infiltrate it and make it better from the inside, then that's a great strategy as well.
Go out there, collect something amazing, and if you don't have a library card, and this is the excuse for why you finally get one, then we've accomplished our mission.
There will be 100,000 of these new cards available at all L.A. City Library branches while supplies last. At the L.A. Central Library in downtown, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The L.A. City Library System has 73 branches to choose from. Well, city leaders gathered to remember a dark period in Armenian history. Getting around downtown L.A. may soon get a lot easier, and a neighborhood in South L.A. gets the beauty treatment. All these stories in City B. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti, L.A. Councilmember Paul Krikorian, and the Armenian community came together at the Armenian Genocide Monument at Bignell Park in Monobello to commemorate the 101st anniversary of the Armenian genocide and to bring awareness to the new threats being faced by the Armenian people in Syria.
But we're also here to make sure that our country steps up to protect people who are facing destruction even today as we speak.
Los Angeles has been a place of refuge, not just for Armenians, but for those fleeing genocide, war, economic deprivation. It's who we are as Los Angeles, a place that breaks walls down, not builds them up.
L.A. Councilmember Jose Huizar took a ride on a Metro bicycle recently through downtown L.A. to promote a new bike-sharing program coming to the area this summer. The city has partnered with Metro for the program, which will bring more than 1,000 bikes to 65 stations by 2016. For a fee, residents, commuters, and tourists will be able to borrow the bikes to get around On item 22, the recommendation number 1 should state that the contract amount will increase compensation by $1,8,988 for total contract amount not to exceed $2,398,988. And for items 23 and 24, the city engineer has submitted revised reports. On item 23, the location is revised to 6201 Hollywood Boulevard. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, these items are now before this body. Mr. Bonin?
I'd like to call item 26 special, please.
26 for Mr. Bonin. Mr. Krikorian?
27, please.
27 for Mr. Krikorian. Which items do we have cards on?
We have cards on 20, 21, 22, 24, 26, 27, and 28.
Okay, so are there any?
Vote on 23, 25, and 29.
But let's do that. Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That brings us where?
That brings council to presentations or general public comment or items called special.
Mr. Corretts, for an introduction.
I'm delighted to welcome Sharon Haskell, a member of the Israeli Knesset, which is their parliament, to Los Angeles City Hall. We salute and celebrate your leadership and activism on a number of critical issues, including environmentalism and water quality and safety, animal welfare, medical marijuana, and the health and vitality of the creative arts, including cinema. So I'd like to invite you to say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you very much for inviting me to speak here at your council hall. It was important for me to come here as a representative of Israel, a country that shares the same values that you do share here in America of freedom and democracy. It is important to me to share with you and cooperate with you. As a government member, we know that we do a lot of cooperation on environmental issues, animal welfare. Right now, at the moment, in the Knesset, I'm co-chairing the LGBT Caucus, Animal Welfare Caucus, and Medical Cannabis Caucus. I sit in the Committee of Security and Foreign Affairs, the Committee for Science and Technology, and the Committee of Transparency. I know that we do have agreements with the council and with California about a lot of research and cooperation in education. And it is important for me to come and strengthen the relationship and to actually make a little bit more work about things that Israel is leading around the world, like medical research, water technology, and even earthquake research and development. So thank you very much for inviting me here to speak to you, and I look forward on strengthening our relationship and working more and more together.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts. Mr. Bloomingfield would like to rise. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Corretts for bringing you here, Knesset member. It's an honor. In many ways, it makes a lot of sense. The two of you share a passion for a lot of the same issues, which is great to see. I'm just thrilled. Israel has been such a wonderful partner to the United States, but also to Los Angeles. We have the L.A.-Israel Task Force, where we're working on those issues that you talked about. In fact, Wednesday, I'm going to the Milken Institute to talk about just that, about the task force and the cooperation, the unique cooperation between Los Angeles and Israel. So, welcome. Thank you for being here. And, Mr. Corretts, thank you for bringing her here.
Mr. Englander?
I have to rise as a Jewish father just to actually take credit about things my daughters and being a proud father, what my daughters have been doing and the partnership with Israel as well. When I recently visited, well, just a few years ago, to study what Israel's doing in trash disposal in an environmentally sound manner, also in what their water reuse is, and I came home very excited about it. My eldest daughter really wanted to go back, since they'd already been, and went back on birthright. My youngest daughter, who is now just about to turn 17, at 16 is the youngest Jewish ambassador and went back to Israel, and in fact, just this last year, and first went to New York and Philadelphia and Washington, and then Israel, to speak on women equality in the workplace and the environment and socially, and particularly as it relates to relationships with Israel and the United States, which was a very interesting topic, but had to stand up and just say how proud I am of the partnerships, not only we have as a country and as a nation with Israel, but individually as well, and how proud of a Jewish father I am of my daughters. And so, but thank you. You were a great example to them as well, and they'd be honored to meet you at some point, and I certainly respect the work you're doing. So thank you so much.
Mr. Corretts?
Also, I'd like to thank the American Jewish Committee for hosting the Knesset member for an event in Los Angeles. Their mission is to ensure the security and enhance the well-being of the Jewish people and Israel and to advance human rights. And joining us here are Jana Weinstein-Smith, the Regional Director, and Siemak Cordes Tani, the Assistant Director for Policy. So I'd like to recognize them as well. It's great to have someone here who is an absolute kindred spirit on all the issues that we're both interested in. And as I was telling her when I went to Israel a couple of years ago, my colleagues who were there with me will remember, the stray cats came out from everywhere in Jerusalem and followed me around. So on behalf of the city, I'd like to present you with this certificate of appreciation and thank you for all the good work you do in Israel.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's give her another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Madam Clerk, we do have 12 members. You want to reconsider a few items here? Or...
It was called special.
Oh, so it's called special by Mr. Bloomingfield. Okay, then we will move on. Mr. Weezer for very important introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I have a very special introduction today. We have the Mayfield Junior School of the Holy Child Jesus with us, their eighth-grade class. Let's give them a big welcome to City Hall. This class is gearing up for graduation in just a couple of weeks, and I couldn't be more proud of not only them as students who are going to be our leaders of tomorrow, but also my daughter happens to be in this class as well. Amelia, welcome, Amelia, to your dad's work. Take daughter to work day. This school takes to heart the motto, "Action, Not Words," and they're active in their local communities. This particular class has taken up the issue of homelessness as an area that they're learning more about, and they serve breakfast to the homeless population as part of the school's reach-out project at St. Francis Center. And they are here today to learn about how city government works, to learn more about homelessness. And I want to thank my colleague, the Chair of the Homeless Committee, Mark Wees Harris Dawson, who will be speaking to them later on today about what the city's doing with homelessness. And last but not least, I want to take this opportunity to thank their teachers for helping arrange this. Today is, after all, Teacher Appreciation Day, so give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much, and welcome to City Hall.
Mr. Englander, if I can impose upon you for a moment?
All right, now we'll welcome Herb Wesson to the podium to take the floor for a special presentation.
Hey. Members, Mr. President, good morning. Today is a very special day. Today, we acknowledge an individual who decided to spend 30 years of her life, or at least 30 years of her life, working with us, working as a public servant, working for the great city of Los Angeles. So I'd ask you to give a round of applause to Agnes Lung Tam. Give her a round of applause. A few of you may want to know that she is a Trojan. She graduated... Well, I said a few. She got her bachelor's degree from USC and her master's degree from USC, and immediately after that, came to work for the city of Los Angeles. She was hired, and I've got some notes because I don't want to mess it up. She was hired here in 1985 by Department of Water and Power as a management assistant. Am I right? And so from there, I think she moved on to the Police Department and Personnel Department. Every time she moved, it was a step up in one direction or another. It was a promotion. One of the things that really struck me, and I don't know where you get this award. She has received a lot of awards, but members, you got to check this one out. She received the Terrific Person Award. I want to get one of those. She received the Terrific Person Award, but we can go on from there. She's also received awards from the mayor's office. She received from Harvard University the JFK School Innovations in American Government Award. She received a Certificate of Recognition from the City Attorney's Office, a Collaborative Code Enforcement Award from the Quality and Productivity Committee. And also, she received an award from probably the most beloved Speaker of the California State Assembly, which was me. And so she did receive an award for me, and she's just been an invaluable asset to the city and lately for our ITA Department. The mayor's office, Mr. Bloomingfield, who I don't see right now, and myself, we helped create a program called R-Cycle-L-A, where she was our lead person on this program, where we got outside firms to refurbish city computers that we then gave out to individuals in economically-challenged area. And I think that IT really did a yo-person's job in that endeavor, and Agnes was the point of the spear. And also, I want to acknowledge Mr. Ross behind me. Let's give IT a round of applause for their work in really trying to close the digital divide. You know, when you come to work for government, there's not a lot of pats on the back, there's not a lot of thank yous, there's not a lot of accolades, and it's just really hard, hard work. But you do it because there's something special within you that makes you want to give back to others. And I think that this terrific person to my right has demonstrated that. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a great honor that I think we should celebrate the 30 years that we've had with Agnes. Let's give Agnes another round of applause. Ted, did you want to say a word before we ask Agnes to say a few words?
Certainly. You know, the strength of any city department or any city service comes down to the quality of its people. We feel we're absolutely blessed to work for the city of Los Angeles and to work in the Information Technology Agency. Often in technology, you're doing a lot of work on servers and telephones and systems that are used, that are indirectly used to serve the citizens. Agnes has had the pleasure recently to assist in the distribution of over 1,200 computers and internet access to families in need, have their first time to be able to get on the internet, get homework done, and a quality PC from the comfort of their own home. So certainly, thank you again, Agnes, for the work you've done and the support of our city council and our mayor to continue to have technology rise at the city of L.A.
Thank you.
Agnes, so I want to present this resolution to you, and trust me, it says all kinds of great stuff, highlights some of the things that you've done. And again, we really want to thank you for your 30 years. As bright and dedicated as you are, you could have done so many other things, but you decided to give a significant portion of your life to Los Angeles, and we just want you to know that we truly appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Agnes another round of applause. Agnes, say a few words.
Thank you.
Take your time.
I want to thank Council President Wesson and the city council for the honor of having me here to receive a special council resolution for my 30 years of city service. I feel doubly honored, since I did receive a Certificate of Recognition from our esteemed Speaker and Council President, for my contribution toward affordable housing when I was the city's rent director. I want to thank Ted Ross, our General Manager of ITA, Ken Simmons, the Chief Operating Officer of the Housing Authority, Justin Wesson, and Wayne Chan, my ITA and city family, my family, my husband, and my children, Aaron and Danielle, for all their help and support. I am grateful for the opportunity to work for the city of Los Angeles and provide my humble service to the city's constituents. I appreciate the opportunity of being the project manager of R-Cycle-L-A that was spearheaded by our council president. I look forward to the next phase of my life, but the city and the friendships that I have developed here will always hold a special place in my heart. Thank you all so very much. Thank you.
Do you have your children with us today? Why don't we introduce them to Los Angeles? I don't know that...
My son, Aaron.
All right, Aaron, welcome.
And my daughter, Danielle.
So again, thank you, members. Why don't we go to the back? We'll take a few photos. Again, thank you very much, Agnes. Thank you for your...
Congratulations, 30 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Let's give her another big round of applause, and you and your family. Mr. Weezer on item 9.
Colleagues, as you're probably aware, May is Bike Month, and this is one opportunity for us to kick it off in the right way. The Mobility Hub Project will provide new and last-mile connections and multimodal transportation options. Thirteen primary hubs and 85 satellite hubs will be located throughout downtown in Hollywood, providing users with a variety of mobility options, including long-term bike parking facilities, car share, bike share, and shuttle services. This program is being funded by a grant from the FTA, which is aimed at enhancing access of low-income individuals to employment centers, job training sites, colleges, and other educational institutions. Electronic vouchers will automatically reduce rates for low-income bike share users. We are partnering with Metro, meaning service will work seamlessly across the region wherever else mobility hubs are implemented in the future. This project achieves goals in mobility, equity, and planning for our most vulnerable populations, and I want to congratulate DOT staff for always being on the edge of innovation. The Mobility Hubs Project fits in... The Mobility Hubs project fits in well with what I'm trying to achieve through the Downtown L.A. Forward Initiative to build more first-last-mile connections, increase economic access to low-income stakeholders, and complete streets. I look forward to hearing the details from the project on the Transportation Committee, and thank you, Mr. Bonin, for supporting this as well. Thank you, colleagues. I ask for an eye vote on this.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other questions on the key, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. If you're going to yell, excuse me. If you wish to yell out from council chambers, unfortunately, the rules state that you're disrupting the meeting. So unless you have speaker cards filled out for specific items that have not had public comment, or for general public comment, if you have any questions, please ask the sergeants at the ropes. Otherwise, we're going to ask if you yell out from council for the sergeants to ask you to leave the chamber so we can continue the people's business. So just wanted to remind everybody the council rules. So we'll go ahead and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we have a request to move item nine forthwith without objection. That'll be the order. We're going to go ahead and go on to, is this item one? Okay, we'll go on to item two, called "Special for Cards." John Walsh. Oh, I'm sorry, item 20. Okay, we'll pass on that. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. We're going to go ahead and take items 26, called "Special" by Mike Bonin as well as by Cards. So we'll start with Dan, followed by John, followed by Antonia.
I'll pass.
I'll pass by Dan.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDem. This concerns the LAPD request to submit a proposal to the MTA to provide law enforcement services to support bus and rail operations. And they're also, and that would be in the building. I just want to say they're doing a terrible job. In fact, last week, the LAPD, after Don Sepulveda was fired as head of Regional Rail, led him out of the building at gunpoint. Everybody knows this. The head of Regional Rail was led out by the police from the MTA building after being fired at gunpoint. And The Times won't do a story because it might hurt Proposition U2. And if I'm lying, Mr. Bonin, correct me now.
Hello. I thought that this was already implemented years ago. No wonder we've got an epidemic of gangbangers, wetbacks, all over the bus and rail systems. Again, we have an out-of-control, racist, hate-mongering, wetbacks, and chanko-gang-banging pussies, thieves, and scumbags who are protecting the legal, law-abiding citizens who are riding the rails and buses. This is every time on buses. This is every time on the rail systems. If you come on, you've got to hold on to your bags. The moment you turn around, they grab and snatch your purses. They put their foot out in front and trip you. These gangbangers and wetbacks are highly coordinated, and then they start and provoke incidents against you, especially gang-stalking city attorneys. Open up and listen up. Maybe you should try taking a bus every now and then.
You're way off topic.
Yeah.
Way off topic.
Try taking a bus. We do it every day.
If you're going to yell.
And we put up with these gang violence every day.
If you're going to yell, we're going to ask you to give up and forfeit your time.
Do your job.
Okay. You can't yell because the interpreters can't interpret either, so.
I have one minute.
Okay.
I reserve my one minute.
You can't. You're already beyond that, so those are the two minutes. Thank you, ma'am. So with that, Councilmember Bonin, you had a question or not?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I had some questions. Can staff come to the table on this? Can you hold my time while we're waiting for them? Come on up. Yes, sir. So colleagues, I've called this item "Special" because I thought there were some important questions that needed to be raised. This is permission being sought by LAPD to apply and respond to an RFP at L.A. County Metro to provide security services for L.A. Metro within the city of Los Angeles. And I think it has a potential impact on law enforcement resources in our district, and I wanted to tease that out a bit before we move forward with this. I understand that under this proposal, we would be providing 150 officers per day for nine-hour shifts, and they would be on overtime. Is that correct?
Good morning. Commander Ann Clark for LAPD, Lieutenant Chris Hansen, am I right? We do have a plan where it's still in the confidential bidding process, so we are getting close to preparing it. This is merely an opportunity to move this forward and respond to MTA's RFP, and then it will come back before council if we are awarded the contract for approval and for further discussion.
So there's nothing you can tell us right now about how many officers would be used on overtime? How many would be used not on overtime?
We think we have a model that will impact deployment as it currently exists very lightly, but I would prefer not to discuss the exact parameters of that.
Okay. So it appears I'm not going to be getting any answers from LAPD today, colleagues, so let me just say what my concerns are about this potential contract. We, from my understanding, we will be asking for, Metro will be asking for 150 officers per day, which will be paid for by overtime. That may work out. It's a constant staffing model, so if enough officers say yes, then it's not an impact. But if they don't, then those officers, my fear is, will be pulled from patrol. And if you have high crime in your area and you haven't had enough cops, I'd be worried about that. And if you represent a district like mine that has lost cops over the past year, as Metro was doubled, you should be concerned about that. A further question I would have, but apparently we won't be talking about it publicly today, is that there'll be 57 sworn supervisors who will be working on this. And I do not yet know if they will be paid by overtime, or if they will be pulled off of regular duty, and then those positions will have to be backfilled, further impacting deployment in our neighborhood. And we don't have questions yet on what the impact will be, whether or not any civilian support staff will be used, and whether or not that'll be paid on overtime, or if that's civilian staff that we're going to be losing, which will, again, likely be backfilled by able-bodied officers. So I've still got a lot of questions on this. I guess we're being asked to take a leap of faith and go ahead and respond to the RFP and apply, and then ask the questions and make the decision later. If the application is accepted or approved by Metro, I'm a little concerned, once we've gone that far, we've gone too far, and it's going to be hard to pull back. So I'm very wary of this, and for the moment, I remain a no vote.
And if I could weigh in on that, Councilmember Bonin, as a Chair of Public Safety, I too had the same concerns and asked and had several meetings to make sure and ensure that this isn't the end of the process. This is barely the beginning of a process of discussion. And without having the ability to respond, to be able to answer those questions and do the deep dive and research, and come back with the data-driven decisions that we have on those concerns, we need to move forward. It obligates us to absolutely nothing, other than the commitment that we're going to move forward to respond. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we will have all of those questions and answers, dialogue and conversation in Public Safety Committee, once it's responded to, and then coming back to the full council for any decision. So we are under no obligation whatsoever. The department just needs, at least not even a green, I'll call it a yellow light, to proceed at this point from all of us, and I'm okay with that. I've talked to the chief and the mayor, as well as the sheriff and others. And so I think moving forward, baby steps, but having the department go forward to respond is in everybody's best interest, and then come back and have the conversation. So Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, for that clarification, too, because I share all of Mr. Bonin's concerns. And Mr. Bonin and I both wear two hats in this regard. We wear hats as council members, and we wear hats as board members of the agency to whom the RFP will be submitted, or the response to the RFP will be submitted. So I think that as we go through this process, Mr. Bonin and I are both going to be wanting to have a great, robust discussion about the impacts on deployment throughout the city of Los Angeles that pursuing this option will have. But I'm comfortable, in light of what the President has said, in moving forward now, to enable us to have that discussion and to see how the department develops its response to the RFP, including impacts that it may have, positive or negative. Because I can see that there being positive impacts on deployment in Los Angeles as well from this. It's a county-wide system, Metro has presence in every corner of Los Angeles, and so security deployment of LAPD officers in Metro facilities could actually be advantageous in having a broader presence of LAPD throughout the city. But I'm going to want to, as Mr. Bonin has indicated, I too want to tease that out and find out in great detail how that's going to affect each of our districts, including my own, and we'll do that in the process of developing this response and evaluating it as it comes back. But at this point, I would ask for an eye vote so we can have that discussion as we
Thank you. Thank you for that. And so, yes, we will look forward to a very robust conversation and discussion, and the department has heard not only those concerns from me, but now from others, and so we'll make sure that we move forward. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes, one no.
Okay. That's approved. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and take item three, called "Special," by Councilmember Blumenfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President? Okay. I called this item "Special" because I wanted to make something very, to make a clarification on this item, because there was an unfortunate error in the way that this was transmitted and the way that it's listed on our blurb. It was, this is a planning issue that was approved properly in South Valley Planning Commission, but when it was transmitted, there was a mistake. Specifically, I'm talking about a project, the project at 19141 Saticoy Street in Reseda. It's a project that has undergone numerous hearings and meetings. The developer originally wanted over 40 homes. It was a contentious project because it is in a very unique and a very special neighborhood in my district, Reseda Ranch. The project initially was way too big and out of context for the community, which prides itself on animal keeping, and most of the lots are zoned RA. An important compromise was struck, bringing the project in line with the zoning to the east, which is RS, not the zoning on the other side, which was where the Karate Kid was filmed, and having the developer sign a covenant protecting the neighborhood as well. So to be very clear, only 14 homes will be approved with that lot, which is what the South Valley Planning Commission approved, which is what the neighborhood agreed to, which is what the developer agreed to, which is what I agreed to. And when I make an agreement, I stand very, I stand strong by that agreement. What happened is the Department of City Planning transmitted the right zoning for that zone change, which will be RS, but not the right number of homes. And on the transmittal, they wrote 16 instead of 14. And understandably, a lot of neighbors got very upset, and a number of them are here today, seeing 16. Technically, with the RS, you can only have 14, and the number that we all agreed to was 14. And that is the number that we're going to stick with. That is the number that has, that is, that the South Valley Planning Commission agreed to, and that is the number that will be there at the site. It's unfortunate that there was this transmittal error, a technical error, but I wanted to make this point, and I wanted to clarify it, and I wanted to thank the neighbors for their tenacity and commitment to the neighborhood, for understanding the special nature of Reseda Ranch, and who were great partners in this, working with me to maintain the important character of that neighborhood. So thank you for coming out today. Know that we will be vigilant on this. We will keep to what the South Valley Planning Commission approved, and there will only be 14 homes on this site. And with that, I ask for your eye vote.
You need a motion, I believe, if you want to just make a verbal, just so we get it on the record, to correct.
We just move approval, as was approved by the South Valley Planning Commission, 14 homes, and I move that we approve it.
Just because I want to codify it absolutely correctly. Okay. With that, we have a mover. Do we have a second? Councilmember Bonin, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll. And now a third with Joe. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. All right, now we have a special presentation from Councilmember Kern Price. The podium and the floor, councilman, is yours.
I'm going to ask my colleague, Mr. Blumenfeld, to join me. Mr. Blumenfeld, would you mind joining me, please, for this special presentation on National Travel and Tourism Week? Mr. President, members, good morning. Today, Councilmember Blumenfeld and I would like to highlight one of the most important industries in Los Angeles. As Chair of our Economic Development Committee, I'm excited to report that tourism brings in $30 billion to our local economy, accounts for nearly 500,000 jobs, and generates $235 million in taxes for the city. And that's tourism. The tourism industry is a vital component to each and every one of our districts, from Universal Studios to the Valley, to the Walk of Fame in Hollywood, famous Muscle Beach in Venice, to the now vibrant L.A. Live and Staples Center in downtown. We all have areas to highlight, and that's part of what drives people to L.A., its uniqueness and its diversity. And with us today is someone who knows more about the L.A. market and tourism industry than anyone else, Mr. Ernest Wooden, the head of the L.A. Tourism and Convention Board. He's going to share with us some exciting new statistics and information on the industry and highlight some of the work that's underway. But before, let me turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Blumenfeld, the Chair of Innovation, Grants, Technology, Commerce, and Trade, one and only. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. Thank you for including me in this. Tourism is indeed something that is incredibly important, and it's great to be here to help support and highlight National Travel and Tourism Week. I'm very happy to see tourism in Los Angeles is continuing to go up at a record pace. It's not just the job creation or the tax revenue. It's about sharing our city, sharing the city that we love, making it accessible for people all over the world to come out and enjoy. One of the great traditions of Los Angeles is that there is something for everyone, from touring movie studios, visiting art premier museums, going to the Northeast Valley and visiting a new science museum, beautiful beaches, hiking the trails of the Santa Monica Mountains. Los Angeles is a world-class city where all are welcome. One of the things the city council does is make sure that there is a strong infrastructure to enable that tourism. This includes making Los LAX the best it can be with friendly customer service and simple access among all the terminals. Another example of fostering tourism is Councilmember Buscagno's Ports of Call Program. It's helped revitalize the ports of Los Angeles. It's initiatives like this that maximize opportunities. As Chair of the committee that oversees LAX and the port, I take tourism very seriously and safety very seriously, and I strive to make this city better every day. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm looking forward to hearing Mr. Wooden. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm looking forward to hearing Mr. Wooden.
Good morning, Council President, and to honorable members of City Council, all of you together. A particular warm welcome to Councilman Price and Councilman Blumenfeld for inviting me to speak this morning. I'm Ernest Wooden, I'm the President and CEO of the Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board, and I'm here today to talk about why tourism matters to the city of Los Angeles. And what a better time to have this conversation than this week, as we celebrate around the country National Travel and Tourism Week. I'd like to share some exciting news with you about Los Angeles. Many of you know that a few months ago, I joined Mayor Eric Garcetti and Councilman Blumenfeld at LAX to announce that 2015 was our fifth straight consecutive record-breaking year for visitation to L.A. And I'm pleased to share with you today that a reviewer of our visitation numbers for 2015 got it even better. In fact, we welcomed more than forty-five point six million, that's with an M, million people to Los Angeles, with six point eight of those million people being our best customers from international destinations from around the world. Those forty-five point six million people spent twenty point six billion, that's with a B, dollars in our hotels, our attractions, our restaurants, our taxi cabs, and more. This was a result of four point nine percent increase over the previous year, and I'm told by economists that to fully appreciate the economic impact on the entire region, you need to multiply that number by an econometric factor of about one point five, saying that thirty-one point six billion dollars of economic lift came to the Los Angeles area as a result of tourism. And as you know, because you're going through the arduous task of budgeting for next year, an important part of that budget process is a look at income. Those tourists that came to Los Angeles City last year paid two hundred and thirty-five million dollars in transient occupancy taxes into our general fund. And folks, I'd like to share with you that it wasn't as long as 2011, that number was a hundred and forty million. So, there's been significant growth over the years. In fact, last year was a seventeen percent year-over-year growth. So, as you see, tourism matters, and it continues to be a powerful driver of our local economy year-over-year. In terms of jobs, tourism employed more than four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred jobs last year, and we were particularly happy, because in last year alone, we added more than twenty-one thousand, five hundred jobs to the tourism community. This is a four point six percent growth from 2014. The Tourism Board sent its cameras around the city of Los Angeles to take a look at how our tourism folks do what they do, and rolling out the welcome carpet. And I'd like to show you what we found. There is no doubt that the city of Los Angeles is one of the most hospitable cities in the world. And as you know, the Tourism Board's main objective is to get folks to stay overnight when they come, and to grow our occupancy. And I'm here to tell you that last year, the city of Los Angeles' hotels enjoyed the highest occupancy on record, at eighty-one percent occupancy overall. This is an incredible, incredible occupancy percentage. We've seen the awareness for Los Angeles elevate to new heights as a desirable global destination, and this shift in perception is largely due to L.A.'s ability to competitively market our destination. And the biggest difference over the years has been the creation of the L.A. Tourism District, LATMD, which consists of one hundred and seventy major hotels, which was established by the hotel community to help match city money as we go to market around the world. The TMD has allowed us to leverage city funds to expand marketing to such long-haul markets as New York City, Chicago, and Washington, D.C., which now accounts for more than forty percent of our overnight visitation. The return of those invested dollars of the city and the TMD together is calculated more at four, at more than one hundred and forty-five to one, and has meant more than four hundred thousand incremental hotel rooms last year. But we continue to focus on international travelers. I mentioned that they are our best, they stay the longest, they spend the most money. We now have offices in twelve key international ports around the world, including Canada, Mexico, and China. We have offices now in Sydney, in three cities in China, Guangzhou, Shanghai, Beijing, in South Korea in Seoul, in Tokyo, Japan, Sao Paulo, and Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, London, Paris, Frankfurt, and most recently in India, Mumbai, New Delhi, and in the Middle East. As you know, we work very closely with LAX in developing new international routes, and last year, in 2015, we welcomed more than thirteen new flights, and will be exceeding that number in 2016, coming nonstop into Los Angeles. So, I'm appreciative of your time today to highlight, in closing, the importance to the economy of the tourism sector. And I'm here to share with you that we've set a North Star goal of getting to fifty million by 2020, and we are well on our way. It's not a vanity number, it's an economic number. If we get to fifty million, it will mean more than two billion dollars, in today's dollars, of additional direct and indirect spend, and will mean twenty-five thousand additional jobs in every council region in the city of Los Angeles. Quite a lofty goal, but I'm here to say that we're well on our way to doing this. As you can see, tourism matters to our local economy, and I thank every single council member that we work with every single week of the year for helping support, in every way you can, tourism and this important industry. Thank you, and good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Wooden, for that presentation, and colleagues. Happy National Travel and Tourism Week, as we celebrate it here in Los Angeles.
Gentlemen, we have one member on the queue. Mr. Price, Mr. Blumenfeld, we have one member on the queue. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Councilmen Price and Blumenfeld, for bringing this wonderful presentation. And tourism, I mean, it's one of our largest industry. I mean, we are Hollywood, we are entertainment, I mean, this is what we're about. Wow, these statistics are amazing, forty-five point six million total visitors a year, generating twenty point six billion dollars. That's amazing, and, and the goal of fifty million by 2020. I think that's a goal that we all embrace, as one of our largest sectors of economic vitality in our city. However, you know, I really loved, and I know we spoke before, I love to work with the Tourism Board, because I want to make sure that we are a hospitable city, and that we continue to embrace tourists, because, and some of this revenue that's being generated, twenty point six billion, if we could somehow make sure we try to divert some of it towards helping relieve neighborhood impacts, traffic mitigations, because, you know, I have many of the tourist destinations in my district, along with many of my colleagues, and some of these areas are very much impacted. So, we got to make sure that we grow tourism, while at the same time trying to relieve and help neighborhoods, especially with the, with the goal of trying to get the Olympics in 2024. I think it's that much more vital, that we make sure that the tourism promotion gets interconnected with all our different city services, to make sure that impacts, traffic impacts especially, are mitigated. So, I'd love to work with you, thank you for this, and thank you for all your leadership on this matter.
Mr. Buscagno?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to our colleagues, Mr. Price, Mr. Blumenfeld, for this opportunity to recognize the significant impacts that tourism has on our city. And to you, Ernie, for leading our L.A. tourism efforts, appreciate your guidance, your advocacy. I want to also thank Patty McDermott, who, let's give Patty a round of applause, who is really, continues to spread her wings across the city of Los Angeles. And I recall, a year ago this time, I was frustrated that L.A. tourism really not focusing on our efforts on, along our waterfront. And within this last year, L.A. tourism has really stepped up, and has included our efforts to promote our L.A. waterfront. Significant changes are coming, along with the redevelopment of Ports of Call, now the San Peter Public Market. Of course, Crafted has taken off with the newest brewery in town. The Iowa has welcomed over a half a million visitors since 2012. So, really appreciate, you know, not only highlighting our city, but paying specific attention to the L.A. waterfront. So, looking forward to a great year ahead. I understand the, the ports really close on solidifying a long-term lease agreement with Rakovich Company, doing everything we can to put the Warner Grand Theater on the map, with bringing in quality shows to complement our existing community programming there at the theater. So, thank you so much for your partnership, and for paying a specific attention to our district down at the harbor. Appreciate your, your work.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagno. No one else is on the queue. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to item twenty-seven.
And on item twenty-seven, a substitute motion has been circulated.
Can I have one card? William Rodriguez Morrison? I have one card for twenty, on item twenty-seven. Are you here, sir? Are you Mr. Morrison? Item twenty-seven.
Okay, this on this item. Actually, I know the waves are being reduced, and I feel that's very great, but I need, this needs to be done to all constituents. The city of L.A. has already taken away the integrity from most of this community, and I feel the wave, it should be reduced, and I thank you very much. And one last question, because I know this was passed, there was a couple other items that were passed, and I feel the integrity should be going back to the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes cards on item twenty-seven. Madam Clerk, there are two votes that we're going to take on this item.
First vote is whether to substitute.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Thirteen eyes. Okay, now, the items before us, let's open the vote, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Thirteen eyes. Item passes, let's move on to item one.
Item one, called "Special," for cards.
First speaker, Jimmy Towes. Are you here on item one I? Followed by Patricia McAllister and John Walsh.
Good morning, Madam President, distinguished members of the board. I rise to speak against passage of item one I, related to 20934 West Sherman Way. This is a matter of fundamental fairness and due process. If, if the City Council was aware of the process that goes through to issue these notices, wherein a notice is issued after, not before, but after penalties are already levied against the property owner. The process by which this is done is a tenant receives the notice that they failed to file their business license. If the tenant fails to do it, then after penalties and assessments are already issued, the property owner is given notice, not beforehand, and before, the initial notices they get actually indicate, and I have copies of them with me, this is not a bill, there is no need to pay. And then, when the property owner follows the notices provided by the city that says this is not a bill, after assessments and penalties have already been issued, then they receive a bill later on for additional penalties, additional interest, and additional assessments. That's why I request of this, of this honorable body to recognize that issues of due process play here, and that matters such as this one should not be passed without really engaging in and looking at the specifics of what this council is passing. There are property owners who bring jobs and relevant taxes to the city, who are ignored, and as are their rights. And for that reason, I request that the board not vote in favor of item one I, which is related to the property of 20934 West Sherman Way. I would also note to the Honorable Counsel that the property owner here in question has offered for two years to pay the amount owed, just not the penalty assessments that were issued, without proper due process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Sadio?
Item for thirty days.
Hold this item.
For thirty days.
One I, you want to continue it for thirty days? Madam Clerk, what day is that?
That is to June first.
June first. Sir, your item will be continued until June first. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Next speaker, Ms. McAllister, followed by Mr. Walsh.
I'm looking at address 17168 West Jermaine Street. Now, after looking at this lien, I see now that the city is actually fixing up the properties. They're fixing the violations. I don't think you should be doing that. The violations should not be fixed by the city, costs are passed on to the homeowners or the business owners. These homes are being fixed so that the city can take over. How do I know that? Because you're using your own numbers. If you fix up the house and the violations, I see here, you spent, you claim you spent five thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars for a barricade, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars to clean the house, a one thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars to clean the house, and seven thousand dollars to, to, to put a fence in. That homeowner could have gotten that done for half the cost. You have no business going on people's properties, fixing nothing, and then you're passing the cost on to them. I see nowhere where you're deducting that five thousand dollar handiwork fee that you can reduce. And I also see something that, in legal terms, we need to challenge this in court. It says that pursuant to the authority granted by Section 91.8906 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, and Section 7.35.3 of the Los Angeles Administrative Code, it is proposed at the lien for this sum of ten thousand dollars and some cents, plus an amount equal to forty percent, or a minimum of one hundred dollars. What do you mean forty percent or minimum? It's got to be one or the other. And I see that two hundred and fifty percent may have been reduced, and I like that. Even if you're charging forty percent, that's not bad, but I want it down to twenty percent, okay? Twenty percent, but let's get that or out of here. I don't think they should be charged anything. I really don't. We're in the business of keeping people in their homes, not putting them on the street, okay? We want them in their homes, get rid of this interest fee, and quit going on people's properties.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is the Building and Safety Report, confirmation of liens for nuisance abatements. I'm glad somebody got up and protested. I've been coming here for, regularly for several years. Anybody who gets up here and protests, they postpone the vote, and then either... Anybody who gets up here and protests, they postpone the vote, and then either it's slashed or the fine disappears. This is, and I'd just like to point out that you do not have a quorum here. The only people in their seat, Weezar Kocorian, Rue, and Buzcayeno, Sidiyo, and Madam Chairman. This meeting is not, does not have a quorum. It is null and void. Anything you do can be appealed. Anything they do can be appealed because there was no quorum when you were up here. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, that concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes, item 21 is next.
Item 21 called special for cards.
Dan, item 21, followed by Antonia Ramirez.
One minute only, one minute. How can you have a card for me for item 21 but lose the card for item 26? I'm just curious, how does that happen? Bike lanes, bike lanes. So how is there zero compensation for this? It's not that I'm against the use of sharing these bike stations, but where are the rules regarding bicyclists being prevented from speaking on the phone when they use these bicycles? Where have you discussed dangers that this program can bring to the street? I don't see any enforcement of people using these bicycles when they're speaking on the telephone. It can cause a crash. I don't see how that's not addressed here, and why you're going into this without it being articulated. And I also would like to know, well, all right, we'll leave it at that. It's one minute, and where is my item 26 card?
Okay, next speaker, Antonia Ramirez. You're going to pass? Thank you, ma'am. That concludes item 21. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's move on to item 22.
And on item 22, motion 22A has been circulated for consideration.
Okay, I have cards on item 22. The first speaker is Patricia McAllister, followed by Mr. Walsh and Antonia Ramirez.
Okay, I object to item 22. I did some research on this company, Urban Futures Bond Administration Incorporated. They have 22 staff members, and one is black. You said even in the description of this contract that this company has been doing this work before, and you decided to choose them again. That's not how we do bidding. We do bidding based on cost. This company could have been charging double what another company could have charged. So we don't select companies to do business with because they did business before. This country is not meeting its minority obligations, and this council is doing nothing but putting out contracts. Now, I did see that error here, and I think he's turning my speaker down. Don't turn my speaker down, sir. I see this error here that says you're going to authorize the general manager of the housing authority or designation or designate to execute a second. So you're giving them a Second Amendment to the contract with Urban Futures, and it will be in an amount of 81 million. I want that offer here. What do you mean 81 million? It's on paper, and we want that taken off because you can execute that if we let that go through like it is. For the total contract amount not to exceed $2,398,000 using low and moderate income housing fund, 55J. This company also keeps track of the actual housing. So we want to know how many black people are moving into this affordable housing that you're giving these people to monitor, and we want to know how many illegal aliens are in these housing. Based on my research, we have a lot of black and white people on the street because illegal aliens are in the housing. When I say housing, affordable government subsidized housing. So I want to, I don't think this company should get this contract because they've done it before, and illegals are still getting into this housing. I object.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker, Mr. Walsh, followed by Antonia Ramirez.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is a contract, Urban Futures Bond Administration, to do what the city could do on its own, not to amount not to exceed $2,398,988. So what are they doing? They are occupancy monitoring. That must take about two or three hours a month. Occupancy monitoring. They don't give a damn, they're not going to ask any questions, they're just going to throw the money out, throw the millions of dollars out, and this is a former CRA contract. Remember, I got up in 1971 and said, "I will bury, I'll live to see the CRA in the ground." And the CRA is dead. Jerry Brown and the rest of us destroyed the CRA. It doesn't exist anymore. Don't think we're jerking off up here. We're serious. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Antonia Ramirez, item 22. Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to stay on the subject, okay?
Yeah, we always do. Thank you. These two, the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department and the city administrative officers have conspired wickedly, underhandedly, to monitor the city's affordable housing inventory without letting us know. What they do is they bring in all their wetbacks and their gangbangers. Again, they're racist, hate mongering wetbacks and gangbangers. And again, there goes the community. We have a plight of homeless military veterans and their families living on the streets. How much time does it take to comprehend and compute that in your brains? We have military veterans who are hurting really bad, and we've got law-abiding citizens, baby boomers and senior citizens who are Americans, not wetbacks, not chango shit, not gangbangers. You are subsidizing, we are subsidizing, I am homeless too. I am subsidizing them with me, living on the goddamn streets by having these fucking wetbacks living in a home. I don't mind me, but I do worry about our military veterans. Stop subsidizing these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers and bring our military veterans first and foremost to housing. They deserve that. Stop subsidizing these goddamn gangbangers. Get them out. Deport them, deport them, or put them in some form of shelter and deport them out of here. They don't deserve a home, they deserve gaga up their asses. How dare you put the military on the streets? How dare you? And Jose Weezar, teacher daughter, homelessness first teacher, who's standing there, who's homeless? I stand there because I'm a principal. You are here because you're a crook.
Ms. Ramirez, you're not directing your comments to a particular council member. Thank you very much. That concludes cards on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes, let's move on to special one, Madam Clerk, for Mr. Corretts.
Yes, and there are two votes on the special. The first vote will be on the findings, and the councilman will speak to those.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The special one motion today is regarding a cell tower in my district, and the findings are that we originally told this item would be continued because the person most affected was out of the country. Other neighbors in opposition also joined in this assumption. We later heard that the item was actually heard and passed, even though the Public Works Board knew that this opponent or main opponent was going to be out of the country. And so we were asking a 245 to assert jurisdiction and ask that it be returned to committee for a full hearing in which all the stakeholders are able to participate.
I have one card on special one, Dan.
Thanks. It kind of concerns me that something of such environmental risk to the people of Mr. Corretts's district, that it's not on an agenda, that it's a special last-minute, under-the-wire kind of thing. How can that be? You know, we have all of these parades and the happy talk that goes on here all day, but something like this where people come here almost on a weekly basis, and they talk about dangers in the electromagnetic fields and these cellphone towers, I'm just wondering, how can that be unplanned, sudden special one? And then all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you know, all of the happy talk that goes on today, that comes before, this is a very important issue, and if it goes back to committee, that's fine. I'm just really disturbed how something of economic health, something that might cause cancer risk, something that people are sensitive to, like these electromagnetic fields, how could it be such an impromptu thing? How can the city of Los Angeles not know that this is a jurisdictional issue? It concerns me that stuff like this isn't the number one issue on your agenda on any given day and other things that relate to the public health. It's really unfortunate because we don't get to prepare notes about this, and it just leads to the perception, you know, fair or not, it leads to the perception that you're not dealing honestly with the public on these issues of health and safety. This is a paramount issue. I'm glad it's being addressed, but I'm really, really concerned that it was done on a special. Really, really concerned. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh on special one.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Special. The only reason for a special, remember, it's not on the agenda, it's not on the board, it's a secret thing they want to get through, okay? It's a secret thing that they want to get through fast without any protests. And the only reason for a special under the law is emergency, emergency. Something evil, something catastrophic will happen if you don't pass it now. Now, we damn well know that that's not the reason. Remember, the city council, David Zahnheiser, he's on his knees in front of the mayor. You can get away with murder here because the time sucks you off.
That concludes speakers on this item. Let's take our first vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Corretts, would you like to close before we vote on the item? Are you done? Okay. So the items before us, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item 24.
Item 24 called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, followed by Ms. Ramirez.
Okay, this concerns the Hollywood Walk of Fame. I stepped on it in 1966 for the first time, and Jodie Foster. I want everyone to go out there, all these tourists, and see how filthy the Hollywood Walk of Fame is. I put filthy pictures on my website, HollywoodHighlands.org, to show you. Terrible, and it's very dangerous. This Jodie Foster star will be very near one of the motion picture theaters. All of the motion picture theaters on Hollywood Boulevard are installing metal detectors. That's how scary it is there. They're afraid of being killed in the motion picture theaters. That's how bad it is on Hollywood Boulevard. Go out there. Hollywood Boulevard, Hollywood Highlands.
Look, I have seen Jodie Foster on TV. She's not my favorite actress, not like the beautiful Jaclyn Smith and our gorgeous Hong Charlton Heston. She was great in the movie The Flight Plan, but other than that, I'm not a fan of Jodie Foster's. Come on, man, can we get someone else? Jodie Foster is so-so. I wish you had great actresses and great actors like the, back in the old days, you know, like the Charlton Hestons, and those were beautiful and great actors with spit and great genuineness of passion and beauty and elegance and opulence. Now we got, you know, god dang, you got drudgery, Jesus Christ. You see that on the streets, man, why would I turn it on in TV? But having said that again, please let us vote for Donald Trump again. We want a beautiful, we want a beautiful America. We want more stars on Hollywood Boulevard, but we also want the SWAT team like the LAPD to escort these wonderful peoples to get their names on the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. That concludes cards on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's move on to item 28.
Called special for cards.
Okay, the first speaker on item 28 is Dan. And Madam Clerk, there's been a request to move item 26 forthwith. Go ahead, sir.
So you're commemorating the 2015 Special Olympics now, a third of the way through 2016. I got to ask why. What do you guys remember from the 2015 Special Olympics? Do you remember forgetting the buses to pick up the participants? Do you remember the participants having to sleep on the floor and not being able to get back to their living quarters? Is that's what you're commemorating? Are you commemorating how the next time you apply for the Special Olympics, how you will harm the participants, how you will inconvenience the participants, how you will endanger the participants, how you will make them uncomfortable? It was a Special Olympics, all right? The question is, how royally specially could you fuck up their experience here and give Special Olympics a bad name? My question is, will you treat the full Olympics, the one that you're trying to get now, with the same disrespect, with the same disregard that you treated the Special Olympics last year? So what exactly are you commemorating? That you endangered them? That you made them uncomfortable? That you forgot them? That they slept on the floor? That you forgot the transportation? That you embarrassed us? Or that this city is utterly incapable of handling a small-scale Olympics? How in the hell are you ever going to handle a full-scale Olympics? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker was Mr. Walsh and then Ms. Ramirez. Sorry about that, Ms. Ramirez. Oh, Ms. Ramirez, I was just informed you're out of time. You're out of time, but Mr. Walsh, you can come up next for item 28. And Mr. Walsh, you have one minute left.
You don't count the special one, that's not part of the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, what happened was they were stranded. All the Special Olympic kids were stranded because their private buses, charter buses didn't show up. The MTA did a good job, emergency job, of rescuing them from the airport, hundreds of them. They were deposited at the local college, and they slept on the hard wooden floor of the basketball court. That picture's on my website. That picture's on my website. The Times didn't cover it because they suck off the mayor, because everybody over there has a gay fantasy that they want to suck off the mayor. HollywoodHighlands.org, you stranded those children. I have pictures, and everybody knows it, scumbags.
Okay, that concludes the cards on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. Richard Robinson? This is public comment, is he here?
Because the councilman moves to Sacramento in order to serve a larger constituency, his enemies multiply like lice when he moves back to the horseshoe in a smaller district. Ma'am, the good he did as a servant at city council may be buried with his bones if lies allowed the body politic to become a louse when he moved back to his former house. So it was with good King Richard. Because of the extraordinary nature of Mr. Alarcon's situation, the Kafkaesque bruhaha official, the man is honorable. Why was he turned into a lying thief? Thank you.
Next speaker is Dion Cornelius. Next speaker is Dion Cornelius.
Can I have time to hand these to someone for the council? Hi, my name is Dion Cornelius. Good morning, council. I'm a proud and professional humble civil servant. I work for Lawa. I'm a bus driver. And I would like to say that the other day, on, last week, a report came to your Board of Airport Commissioners. I am here to talk about the report that was submitted on four-twenty-one, two thousand sixteen. The report was accompanied by a PowerPoint presentation by Deputy Executive Director Jacqueline Yaff. The report asked for approval to award a contract for airfield passenger busing services. The report was misleading. It appeared to show that the $431,000 nine-month contract would be for all outright services for a vendor, yet the vendor would only be providing drivers to drive the city buses. This means that the cost for providing...
Sir, that concludes your time. Thank you. The next speaker is William Rodriguez Morrison. She waves his time. Next speaker is John Alemann, followed by Dan and Jacqueline Richardson.
Well, I noticed a lot of hate, so I'm gonna leave you guys with some words of encouragement. This is Mike Poem. Seeking questions with no answers, the violent talk with such anger. Their dispositions lost in lies, their death comes as a flies. Following their sight into their disaster, just like cancer. Eyes full of hate, they are no answer, monopoly. The truth blinds them, they care not to be free. Talking with their ignorance, turn to stupidity. Mouth flowing with anger, no longevity, solitude. Screaming out indifference, where is fortitude, silence? The cries of the innocent are muffled, violence. A fever of apathy and questions inhibit the air. Why do we wish to act unfair? God will take me there. Many ways to begin with one another. We lean in and out to avoid each other. These tired eyes are fallen heavens. Unleash the room without irreverent. Pity is given unto the leaders. Rescue come swift, mind readers. I wanted to read more, but I don't have time. Well, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you. The next speaker is Dan, followed by Jacqueline Richardson and John Walsh.
Council members, I have the number one article on City Watch LA today. I am the most-read author on City Watch LA today. My article, "No Kill: LA's Big Lie." I disseminate the bogus claim that the city of Los Angeles is not killing animals. To the viewers on Channel Thirty-Five, read my article and I will show how Mr. Wesson in particular is responsible for thousands of animals being killed in the city of Los Angeles and how he's blocking my way to get documents about it. It's on City Watch LA. It is the most-read article of this day and so far this week. It's called "No Kill: LA's Big Lie." I show how the mayor, Mr. Galperin, Herb Wesson are non-compliant with my CPRA requests. And believe me, you're gonna get sued. And when you get sued, I'm gonna tell it on a national stage in another publication.
Next speaker, Jacqueline Robinson, I'm sorry, Richardson, followed by John Walsh and Antonia Ramirez.
Photocopies or holographs are now work in banks and in supermarkets. They also may be in the Skid Row area as homeless and collect SSI checks and GR checks. They may also live in government-supported housing with reduced rent. Five of them can kill a building full of people in five to fifteen minutes. They can also be used in warfare against the United States. Instead of the enemy dropping bombs, planes, and machine guns, they can use photocopies. None of this information has been confirmed. For this reason, they should be outlawed, not allowed in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, followed by Antonia Ramirez and Patricia McCallister.
J. Walsh Confidential. Donald Sepulvede, executive head of regional rail for MTA, last week was fired and then led out of the MTA building at gunpoint by police officers. Mr. Krikorian loves to correct me. If that's a lie, destroy my credibility and say it didn't happen. I don't think... If you went to see Jungle Book on Hollywood Boulevard, you were forced, and paid fifteen dollars, you were forced to go through a metal detector. Hollywood Boulevard is now like a prison. You must go through a metal detector to go in any of the theaters. That's how bad and how dangerous Hollywood Boulevard is. And the other day, a wrongful death jury award of $23,700,000 for someone was hit in an intersection in northwest San Pedro. And the blood of that person is on the hands of Joe Boscaino. Twenty-three million dollars you have to pay out, a jury.
Next speaker, Antonia Ramirez, followed by Patricia McCallister.
Thank you. I just, I spoke today to Lieutenant Hanson of the LAPD regarding public safety. We know we can't depend on Chair for Public Safety, Mitchell Englander, because this man dedicates himself to censoring us, continuously interrupting us or throwing us out because he is afraid. He is pathetic. He is despicable. He has no integrity and no ethics. What a shame and what a disgrace. We ask you to recall this man and get him out. Do not vote for him in any way, shape, or form. He is incompetent. Having said that, Mr. Ernest Woods, who sits on the tourism board, he's a liar. It's all propaganda. I have stayed in the most classiest hotels and you've got nothing but cheap labor. And all I had to worry about was worrying about my things in my room. All of these wetbacks and gangbangers that are employed in these hotels, like the Hilton Hotels, the Holiday Inn, and Beverly Hills Plaza Hotel, all of these expensive hotels, or the Sheraton, or the Crown Plaza, they are thieves. Do not trust them.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Next speaker, Patricia McCallister.
I taught the Los Angeles Unified School District and the county for seven years. As a substitute teacher, I taught math. The Los Angeles Unified School District and the California State Teachers Retirement System, we call it Calsters, they are embezzling millions in teacher retirement funds, and I have some proof that they are involved in racketeering. They're doing this by illegally reducing teacher service credits. This scam denies teachers their retirement funds or the amount of money teachers should receive each month. We need a federal investigation of Calsters and LAUSD. Now, this city council, you need to get more involved in the school system. You bring these children here, which looks very nice, but you need to get involved. We need to set up a committee to give the city more oversight of LAUSD and Calsters. Now, like I said, I am a computer programmer, so I got my hands on the code of what they're using to calculate teacher retirement, so I got the goods on them. We're gonna send some folks to prison around here.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Words before us.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Seeing none, can we please rise for adjourning motions and including our audience, please? Adjourning motions, any adjourning motions to my right? Seeing none. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Great, thank you. I'm sad I have two adjourning motions today. First, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Jennifer Miller, who passed away last week of cancer at the very young age of forty-six. She was a lifelong Valley resident who grew up in Encino, graduated from CSUN with a degree in finance. She was a State Farm agent in Westlake Village and previously worked with her husband, who was the former honorary mayor of Woodland Hills, Michael. She was tirelessly involved in contributing to her community as a parent volunteer at Round Metal School and active in Cub Scouts. She also coordinated the annual Fernando Award scholarships, was a board member of Woodland Hills Tarzana Chamber of Commerce, served on the Woodland Hills Coalition for the revitalization of Ventura Boulevard. She was a volunteer for West Valley Boosters and American Legion, a contributor to Valley Cultural Center scholarships. She was passionate. She was passionate about improving and contributing to women's issues. That made her a strong supporter and volunteer at the Valley Women's Center as well as the San Fernando Valley Girl Scouts. She and her husband were loved by so many people in the San Fernando Valley for the good-hearted nature and all that they gave to the community. She was devoted to her loving husband, Michael, who predeceased her, and to her children, Montana and Chandler, and to her parents. Services will be held on Friday, May sixth, at 5:00 PM at St. Bernadine Church in Woodland Hills. May she rest in peace. I also have another adjourning memory, another sad adjourning memory. Asking everyone to adjourn in the memory of Rose Goldwater. She was also a Valley leader, lifelong volunteer, business and community advocate, someone who I called a friend for many, many years. She passed away at the age of eighty-four. She was a leader who brought together businesses, community groups, elected officials, and she moved to create positive change. She was committed to making the San Fernando Valley a great place to live, work, and play, and had served as the community relations liaison for Western Commercial Bank in the Warner Center. She is a historian for the Woodland Hills Tarzana Chamber, historian and charter member for the Calabasas Chamber and the United Chambers of the San Fernando Valley. She was also the founder of the Pierce College Foundation, a co-chair of the arthritis walk-in the Warner Center, the Grateful Hearts Food Fair and fundraiser she did for firefighters. She was a founder of the Executives Association of the San Fernando Valley, a supporter of the Pacific Lodge Youth Services, and a board member of the West Hills Hospital and Medical Center. It's amazing, I'm not even reading half of the amazing things that she's done. In addition to her volunteerism and philanthropy, she was well-known for decades to the community as a businesswoman. She and her husband Nat, they moved to the San Fernando Valley fifty years ago, nineteen sixty-eight. And a year later, they opened and managed the Quality Instant Printing. Before that, Rose owned and operated a beauty salon and a boutique called The Ladies Room. Some of you may have heard of it. It was quite popular. Not surprising, when you give yourself to the community, sometimes you're recognized by that. And awards that were bestowed on her, they were Legion of Awards. They included many things, including the prestigious Fernando Award for a Lifetime of Volunteerism, the City of Los Angeles Pioneer Woman, the Valley Cultural Center's Clyde Porter Humanitarian Award, the Joseph Stahler Award for Business and Community Leadership, the Outstanding Community Citizen Award for Pierce College. They even named an award after her called the Rose Goldwater Westfield Community Service Award. She had a lot of firsts. She broke a lot of glass ceilings. She was the first female president of the Woodland Hills Chamber, the first female president of the Calabasas Rotary and the United Chambers of the San Fernando Valley. She served as the honorary mayor of Woodland Hills from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-six. She was the first female president of the Board of Pacific Boys Lodge in nineteen eighty-six, where she led the charge for a new activity center that is in use today. And that Boys Lodge really serves the community and helps turn around many lives. She inspired many, including me, with her lifelong commitment to volunteerism, her dedication to the West San Fernando Valley. I enjoyed going to lunch with her on occasions and catching up for coffee because she always wanted to help me serve the community. Her advice and direction was invaluable. She was devoted to her loving husband Nat, who predeceased her, her daughters, Michelle and Jackie, her four grandchildren, and eight great-grandchildren. Services will be held on Friday, May sixth, at 1:00 PM at the Eden Mortuary in Mission Hills. There will be a celebration of her life on Tuesday, May tenth, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at the Westfield Community Center. And I know large numbers of community members will come out for that because she was so well-liked, she was so well-loved. In lieu of flowers, the families ask that donations be made to some of her favorite local Valley charities, the Rotary Club of Woodland Hills, Valley Women's Center, and the Pacific Lodge Boys Home. May Rose Goldwater rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Mr. Englander?
I've got one, but before I do, I want to say something about Rose. She was a dear friend and Michelle, her daughter, for many, many years. I mean, she was just a staple of the community. And we worked on a lot of different initiatives together and projects, and she was always there. She was the one that, if you walk into a crowded room, if you walked into Fernando, if you walked into the chamber lunches, if you, anywhere, she was everywhere. You saw this woman with a sparkle and a shine and a glow and a smile. That was infectious. And she will be missed. And I would like, if I could, to say something as well about Jennifer Miller. Mike was a dear friend of mine. We used to ride together on our Hyleys, and we were shocked when he went to go watch the Super Bowl in Palm Springs with all his friends one year, not too long ago, and had a heart attack, died instantly there. And it was shocking because he was not just full of life, but so young. And Jennifer really held it together for her kids and still continued to volunteer in the community. She was a dancer in the Valley of the Stars just a couple of years ago. And a special shout-out to Brad Rosenheim, who really took her under his wing, almost as if another daughter, although we're all about the same age. He was really always there for the family. One night, my daughter asked me if I could drive her to a party that a friend of hers was having from school. And so we drove up and, as she's giving me directions, like I've been here before, and we pull up to their house, I said, "You know Mike and Jennifer?" She said, "No, I know Montana's a good friend of mine. We go to school together." And talk about a small world, just never put two and two together, and then we'd all hang out. We got the shocking news this weekend. In fact, my daughter told me Montana was coming home last week from college to be with her mom, and I knew then the days were limited. And she was a very special lady. She'll be missed. I'd like to honor with great sadness in memory of our city fire captain, Sean Stillson. Captain Stillson was stationed at a fire station eighty-one in Panorama City. Tragically, Captain Stillson took his own life on April twenty-second of this year. Sean Patrick Stillson was born on February nineteenth, nineteen seventy-two. Sean was the first in a set of identical twins born that day to Judy and John, Mike Stillson. Sean was inspired by the firefighter careers of his father, Battalion Chief Mike Stillson, who retired on July fourth, nineteen ninety-nine. His uncles, Captain One Patrick Stillson and engineer Timothy Stillson, both retired, and his grandfather, Captain John Stillson, who retired in nineteen seventy-eight. A long life of first responders, firefighters. Sean joined the Los Angeles City Fire Explorer Program in nineteen eighty-six. He remained involved until nineteen ninety, when he was accepted into the Allen Hancock Fire Academy. He completed the academy, ranking first in his class in nineteen ninety-two with his EMT certification. Sean joined the Los Angeles Fire Department in nineteen eighty-five and in two thousand and eight was promoted to a Captain One. He was assigned special duty as a drill master at eighty-one, November two thousand fourteen, and remained there when he saw two classes graduate from tower training. Sean's dedication to his career and equally strong devotion to his family were well-known by all who knew him. He's survived by his wife, Deborah, and two sons, Tyler and Cole. Nationwide, we are experiencing an increase in the need for behavioral health support for firefighters and police officers, our first responders. Firefighters and paramedics are not only exposed to extremely high-risk conditions, but they also accumulate emotional trauma over the course of their careers. Because they are driven to perform under extreme circumstances, they find different ways to deal with these stressful situations and often have a difficult time expressing their feelings or emotions. We cannot allow one more first responder to suffer alone. So today, I'm asking and joining the LAFD in asking all of our first responders to reach out to our support systems peers and our Los Angeles Fire Department psychologists. In the coming weeks, Fire Department will enact Safety Stand Down to address behavioral health and wellness and awareness in the Fire Department. We must remember to honor Sean's memory and take care of each other. The memorial service for Sean will be held on May sixth, ten o'clock, at Drill Tower Eighty-One located at fourteen three fifty-five Armida Street, Panorama City. Sean finally have peace in his life. Rest in peace. Our hearts go out to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Boscaino?
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Ann Hansford, passed away on Sunday, April twenty-fourth. She graduated San Peter High School in nineteen fifty, earned her bachelor's from Cal State Dominguez Hills, worked for LA Unified as an office manager for fifteen... Dominguez Hills, worked for LA Unified as an office manager for 15th Street Elementary School for 15 years, and was a member of the Grandview Methodist Church. An avid lover of history and records, she was not only a volunteer with the Friends of the San Pedro Library, but ran a historical, ran all the historical archives in the San Pedro City Hall Building. As The Daily Breeze reported, she resisted computers, but efficiently guided an impressive room tucked away in the City Hall Building that is filled with files, maps, books and odd mementos that tell San Pedro's colorful history. Whether you were looking for an obscure photo of Sixth Street from the early 1900s or history of the California bungalow that one just bought, Miss Hansford had it all in her fingertips, and usually knew right where it was without having to look up, looking it up while using her old-school typewritten card catalog somewhere in room 2, 626 in San Pedro City Hall. Among the collection, a box filled with old matchbook covers from businesses no longer in town, a piece of the old Warner Grand Theater curtain, World War II stamps, old cruise line menus, and last night on Beacon Street drinking glasses. Tours in San Pedro were done based on her archive. Though she was an avid collector of history of San Pedro, she became part of the history as well. She is survived by her loving sons Doug, Wes and Greg, and her sister Peggy Rose. Services will be held this Saturday, May 7th, at 3:00, at the First United Methodist Church in San Pedro, May. Ann Hansford, rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Sadio?
Yes, Members, Jose Pepe Peña was a giant in our community in northeast Los Angeles. He is known as the proprietor and owner of La Morenita Bakery in Cypress Park for the last 25 years. But before that, he grew up in his mom's kitchen, her restaurant, Juanitas, where he mastered not just the culinary arts, but became a great guitar player, flamenco player, musician, musician that ultimately played for presidents of both Mexico and the United States. He was a very robust man with a great life and a great personality. He had a lifetime teaching credential from LAUSD, and it is a sad note of his passing, but it was a very rich and fulfilling life. He is survived by his sister Concepcion, his sons, Cesar, Ernest, Alex, and his beloved grandchildren. He was a very huge personality who lived a very rich life, born March 19th, 1942. He passed this March 4th, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.